Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. Council members, at this time, if you would, please stand for the invocation which will be given by Reverend Lender Moore from West End United Methodist Church, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiances.
Good evening.
Hi there. Please bow. To the One who created us, to the One who brought us to this gathering safely, we invoke your presence. We ask, oh Lord, that you would be in the midst of all of this as people gather to do the work of the city of Portsmouth. We pray, oh Lord, that as you minister, because this is a ministry, believe it or not, it might not be a church, but this is a ministry, because you are calling servants to serve this city. And, Lord, as they serve, we pray that you will give them wisdom. We pray, Lord, that you will speak to their hearts and that when they speak, that they will speak words that are encouraging, words that will build up this city. And so we ask that you would bless this gathering, bless those on council, and just bless the city of Portsmouth. We thank you for allowing us to be here. It's in the name of the One who called us to be that we offer our praise and our thanksgiving. In His name we pray. Amen.
Amen. (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you, Reverend Moore. You can't get away that easy. We need you to come back up. This is your first time gracing us. This is your first time gracing us with your presence, and it is customary to allow you to give us a little info on yourself and your church, if you will.
Okay.
And, yes, ma'am. And we give you all of one minute.
Oh, well, you're giving us a minute. I am the pastor of West End United Methodist Church. We're at the corner of Rodman Avenue in Winchester, 1800 Rodman Avenue. We're a congregation that is very active in the community, and we love this city, and we want to see nothing but the best out of you guys, okay? So, I'm just glad to be here and to have been asked, and my minute is up.
Thank you. You yield back the balance of your time to the -- thank you.
I gotta go to church.
Good evening. Council members, if you would, indicate your presence electronically, please. Council members, indicate your presence electronically. All right.
Seven members of City Council are present.
Thank you. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of December the 8th, 2015, and a regular meeting of December the 8th, 2015. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted 7-0.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Members of council, we'd like to beg your indulgence for a moment. If Mayor Wright would please join Vice Mayor Simmons at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have a distinct honor tonight to present Mayor Wright with a new city pin, and this is a five-years-of-service pin. Many of you know that a few weeks ago, we had a wonderful ceremony for our city employees for their years of service, many of them, a surprising number, 10, 20, 30 years of service. And here on council, we do the same thing, but in a little different type of ceremony. So it's my pleasure to present the mayor with his five-year service pin.
I appreciate this, and I look forward to more years to come. At this time, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Kudos are not done. At this time, we'd like to ask Councilman Curtis Edmonds and Councilman Paige Cherry to please join Mayor Wright at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk.
And it is my distinct honor to be able to present these five-year pins to Councilman Cherry and Councilman Edmonds. You know, when I think about legacy, when I think about the citizens, and you often talk about, what have you done? What have you done lately? And then you look at the perceptions that are put out, they don't always jive up. And so I look back over these last five years and the accomplishments that we, as a city, have made over these last five years in areas of financial stability, getting our credit rating, as well as the negative outlook removed from one of the agencies, getting a strong AA rating, ending the year with surpluses, the development that has taken place throughout our city and what's going on now. I look at the completion of a $78 million courthouse. I look at the $14 million renovation that occurred with the children's museum. I think back to, I think one of the pressing issues when we first took over was the retirement plan, and we had seniors and everybody coming in demanding some action. And that was $168 million undertaken to put that to rest and to keep that plan from near collapse. And so you think of those types of things and look over the last five years, and we've basically done more in these last five years than we've done in the last 25 years. And for you two gentlemen to be a part of this leadership team, and this is all of us Portsmouth, this is our redevelopment and housing authority, what we've done at Seaboard Square, the completion of Westbury, all of those things, and we built three elementary schools. So our school board, all of us working together and looking at those types of things, and so when you receive these types of recognitions and you're able to thank people for what they do, and in most cases, it is a thankless job, but when you put those things in those types of orders, I mean, it really shows what you've done since you've been here and your leadership made a difference. So I'm gonna shut up. I won't pin you, I've given you that, but I would like for you to comment because it is important that the public understands, and most people tell us that, most of us that travel throughout this city compliment us on this new Portsmouth that we're working on, and the things that are happening in our city. And the sooner we get everyone working together, the better that would be. But just look back over the five years that these two gentlemen has been up here in this leadership position and all of the things we've done. Look at our Mid-City. Look at the old Tile Mall. Look at all of those types of things. And Mayor Holler used to always say, put those things in its proper perspective. So we want to thank and congratulate both of them for their leadership and service. So if you would, join me in a round of applause for both of them.
Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. You have done a great job detailing the accomplishments over the last five years, and I just want to say for me, it's been a labor of love. As you said, it a lot comes with the job, but we get up and do it every day because we want to, because we are about service, not because we have to. None of us up here have to do it, but we do it because we choose to. And I'm one from, I'm proud that you gave me the opportunity to do it, and I will continue to do the best I can to serve you, each and every one of you, in the very best way I can. So thank you all for allowing me to do so, and I will continue to work hard for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I was a bit surprised, but it's a joy to be involved in your city, especially one with you growing up in. It's not about us, but it's all, it's not about us, but it's about all of Portsmouth. And so that's why we serve, and that's why we try to do the best we can. We know many people have different outlooks than some of us might have, but we are prayerful, and we do the best we can in choosing to do the right thing. And we all embrace the team come self. Together, everybody achieving much. Go ahead, all Portsmouth, with your bad self.
Thank you all very much. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to three minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your three minutes, you will see a green light. Two minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of three minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Public Hearing, 16-08. Public Hearing on a Use Permit and Code Amendment Applications. Item A. UP 1512, Alexander's Corner. Loray Tucker of Vertical Construction Management requests a use permit for a 7-Eleven at 4125 Portsmouth Boulevard. The property is zoned general mixed-use and is designated as part of a mixed-use corridor and a regional activity center on the Comprehensive Plans Generalized Future Land Use map. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have a gentleman available with the applicant that's available if you have questions.
Okay.
Pardon one second. Let's take a clicker here.
There you go.
All right. Here we go. Good evening, Mayor Wright.
Good evening.
Members of council. Before you tonight, your first use permit public hearing item, as was introduced there, was for a 7-Eleven at the 4125 Portsmouth Boulevard. It's at a site I think most people are pretty familiar with, at Alexander's Corner. It's a corner of McLean and Portsmouth Boulevard. I think this is the kind of use permit you're pretty familiar with at this point. It's a 7-Eleven with gas pumps on a site that, as you can see from the photograph on the left, is currently a used car lot. And I'll just point out one thing to you on that slide on the right. The property is owned general mixed-use, which is an appropriate zoning for this type of convenience store, does require a use permit, and that's why it's before you tonight. What you have there is a depiction of the site plan. You see the, again, the building to the, it's in the upper left of the slide, and the fuel canopy with gas pumps towards the front. And this, again, is a corner parcel. The site is slightly under one acre in size, so it's just over our minimum requirement for this type of use, which requires 30,000 square feet. And what you will have there will be a 3,250-square-foot convenience store building with six two-sided gas pumps located on it. It's very quickly, fairly standard what we're starting to see these days, 7-Eleven elevations of what the store will look like, including the gasoline aisle you have there. I'll point out, if we go back to the site plan very quickly, the site will be served by right-in, right-out entrances only. So you can see one on McLean and one on Portsmouth Boulevard. Both of these have been reviewed via traffic impact analysis, reviewed by the city's city engineer. He has accepted the traffic impact analysis. And of course, as with all of these types of projects, it'll be further refined if City Council approves the use permit once the applicant goes through the city's site plan review process. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. I just mentioned that the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval at their December 1st meeting unanimously, subject to the conditions that were contained in your packet, and they're the fairly standard conditions requiring compliance with the elevations and the site plan that has been presented before you tonight. And again, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have regarding this application.
Okay. Let me ask you briefly, just because that's Alexander Corner, and we have all of that interaction with all of these lanes tying into that one focal point, the only way to access that facility would be, like now with the car lot, to get there, you've got to go around and get to the other side, to come to the left side, and...
Right. You'll be, you'd have to be coming towards the intersection on McLean. You can take a right turn in, same thing, you can take a right turn back out, back to the signalized intersection. Also, if you're heading down, same thing with Portsmouth Boulevard, it's right in and right out. There'll be no cutting across the property to get in if you're heading in the opposite direction. So it's going to be fairly controlled.
Could you back up to the layout?
Sure.
Yeah, then.
So as you can see, it's going to be fairly controlled access in and out, also making sure that the fueling trucks can get in and out of the site safely, as again, that's a very complicated congested intersection. So we're working with, through the city engineer, through the traffic impact analysis, to make sure that the site functions the best it can within that Alexander's Corner environment.
Okay, because that was one of the concerns I had. If you bring in that fuel truck in, and they're coming down McLean, and then trying to turn in, or coming down Portsmouth Boulevard, it seems like it just, it just appears to be tricky. Is that thing rotated the right way or am I looking at it wrong?
That's correct.
Okay, McLean is it, yeah.
Yeah. And again, we will take a look at all that during site plan review and make sure it meets all the appropriate traffic safety standards for that kind of traffic movement. So there are standards that have to be met for the developer when they go through the site plan process, and they'll make sure that every detail is covered on that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Dr. Edmonds?
Yes, Mayor, I agree with some of the things you just asked about, about the traffic. I think it'll be a hazard to some degree. That's a real tight spot. And plus, we have enough 7-Elevens, so I'd like to make a motion that we move to deny.
Second.
Okay, we've got a public hearing. We've got to get feedback from them if we could hold that motion in second, and if that's okay. And I got a council member that also wants to speak. Mr. Meeks?
Thank you. I have the property around the whole piece. I'm going to abstain from...
Oh, so you've got a conflict. Okay. Is he buying into it? He getting a good break? Oh, okay. All right. All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
And we do have a motion to second on the floor, but we have to make sure we do this in proper order, and we'll get back to that. Yes.
We have Mr. Ray King. He is with the applicant, and he's available if you have questions.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mr. King from the body? No question? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to say, Mr. King?
I would just like to point out one thing. For the access off of Portsmouth Boulevard, there's going to be a dedicated right-turn-only lane, which is an effort to help with the traffic, and the entrance on Portsmouth Boulevard is being moved further away from the intersection than it presently is to also aid in the flow of traffic in and out of the property. So it's not been ignored by, in the development. It will be addressed again in site plan review.
Okay. And what about on McLean? Are you as far back as you can from the intersection? I'm really concerned about the intersection. It sounds like you guys are already on it.
It's moved absolutely as far from the intersection as possible on the site.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP 1512. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to three minutes to speak on item UP 1512. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed.
Okay.
Council members, you have a motion before you for a motion to deny, and it has been seconded. You will be voting electronically. This motion for denial has been approved by a vote of four, two, with one abstention. Council members, am I clear that you do not want this item to come back again?
That is correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Four, two, one. Okay. UP 1513, Bataoui. Christopher Brown and Overton...
Overton.
Overton Malone requests a use permit for a restaurant at 1 Bataoui Lane. The property is zoned urban residential and is designated as Preservation Open Space Park on the Comprehensive Plans Generalized Future Land Use map. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Yes, sir.
Good evening again, Mayor Wright, members of council. I think this is property you are pretty familiar with, City Bataoui Golf Course and the Pavilion Building. The request you have before you is to allow restaurant use of the Pavilion Building. This is specifically what's been requested of you, the use permit tonight would be to use the Pavilion Building on Sundays only, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. for the purposes of allowing a Sunday brunch to go on in the building. Again, on this slide, I just want to point out again, the zoning slide on the right, you can see the golf course is zoned urban residential, and as a result, restaurants can only be operated with the approval of a use permit by City Council. That's why they're before you tonight. Again, I think you're pretty familiar with the location. You can see the parking, the main parking lot there in the middle with the Pavilion Circuit with the red dashed oval to the back. As I believe you're aware, the applicant is also the operator of the snack bar at the golf course. City's catering operation there, and again, would like to operate this restaurant for the Sunday brunch only. There'll be no material changes to the site, no modification to the building, no changes to the parking lot, anything of that nature. We would point out, the city's building official has done a capacity analysis, in terms of capacity, the building is 185. That would include everyone, including the staff, patrons, what have you, in the building, 185. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this, 5-0. Point out one thing in the action by the Planning Commission, there are four conditions. One of the more important ones to be aware of is there is a condition that puts the restaurant in a secondary position to the other operations at the Pavilion. So in the event there's a city event, if there's a private party at the Pavilion, or something of that nature, a golfing event, the restaurant operation would not be allowed to use the Pavilion on that day. So in the event of a scheduling conflict, the restaurant is in the second, it would be in the secondary position for that. Again, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Questions or comments? All right. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
How do I have one?
Oh, Mr. Meeks. Yes, sir.
Bob, as far as the overall, the conditions of the Pavilion, they're only using it now, they'll only be using it for the Sunday brunch, or they're using it all, is it available to them now?
As of right now, I believe they've been using it for the Sunday brunch. If the use permit would be denied here, they would not be allowed to use it at all for the Sunday brunch.
Are they using it for catering, or what is that being used for now? That's probably easier.
Yes, I think it is. The building is used for catering, and they are the city's caterers for their events in there. People can use them to provide catering, and there are city events, you can use them for catering. That building, as it was originally intended, is used for, again, city events, use the building. You can, you know, have your own wedding or birthday, or whatever kind of private event in there, and while you can bring in your own caterers, I understand it, they are also available to cater that type of event as well. So the building, again, is city events. It's used for, if there's a golf course, a golf event, and they're having, say, a post-round party or event in there. And when it's not in use, for example, on Sundays, if the building's not in use and it's available, if this use permit was approved, they could use it for the Sunday brunch.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP 1513. And at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to three minutes to speak on item UP 1513.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. On behalf of world-class catering, I'm just here to say that we have met with city planning, and we have agreed to all the terms that have been before us, and we'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to take up this issue. Thank you.
For the record, sir, could you state your name?
Yes, my name is Chester Benton.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Cherry?
Mayor, if I don't know the speakers, I'd like to move for approval.
Members of council, seeing no additional citizens come forward, this public hearing is closed. We have a motion and a second for approval, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved 7-0. Item C, CA 1503, Uptown. The city is proposing to amend the Appendix B, Uptown D2 District Form-Based Code of the zoning ordinance to align with applicable updated laws and guidelines, including removing references to where clearly visible from the street exempts design elements more than 40 feet from the required building line or street space. Type 2 site plan and administrative adjustments. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Good evening, Mayor Wright. Members of council, once again, I'm very glad to be in front of you to talk about our Form-Based Code. We're continuing to work to try to update and revise and make it as user-friendly and as code-compatible as we can. And again, I'm having issues here with the slides. Just for record, for those of you who aren't familiar with the geography, our Form-Based Code is shown on this map here, basically extends from Effingham West, a few parcels east of that, but it goes back just around to the vicinity of the MLK Connector. For those of you, again, who aren't familiar with Form-Based Codes, it uses a regulating plan in place of standard zoning terminology, so we have different types of uses that are permitted under this regulating plan. And then under the regulating plan, we have a series of prescriptive design requirements that developers are supposed to meet when they come in to build within this district. One of the issues I just mentioned going into it, we've had some issues dealing with existing structures, existing buildings, existing land uses out there. The code is, these Form-Based Codes are typically good at handling new development or greenfield development, but when you get into trying to work with a...
Yeah, sit down.
I'll stop there. Any questions? So in any event, we continue to work to try to revise it to make this, you know, applicable, and we have people come in, again, existing property owners, existing businesses, trying to use the property. So just want to give you a general framework of where the district is located. Now, we do have a number of proposed adjustments, and we're working very closely with the city attorney's office on these. A number of these are really trying to get us into compliance. Again, a lot of those Form-Based Codes are approved, we're using Form-Based Codes that are being marketed throughout the country. Virginia, of course, being a Dillon Rule state, very strict regulation from the state. A lot of times, authorities that are granted for Form-Based Codes that are used in other states turn out to not be quite so applicable for people in Virginia. So we're going through our code, trying to make sure we're not getting out of line with what our authorities are. So sort of a kind of a quick list, we have some provisions in the code where the code administrator, which currently being myself, is the planning director. I can make some determinations on moving things around. That is not something that is typically permitted in Virginia. You're supposed to set your standard in your code. It applies to everybody. You're making sure you have equity across the playing field, and so you're trying to limit how much authority the zoning administrator would have to do that type of thing. Same thing on these administrative adjustments. We've already discussed the Type 2 site plan process with council before in relation to that Sinclair versus New Singler wireless case that happened in Albemarle County, where the state Supreme Court said you can't use your planning commission to make adjustments to setbacks and things of that nature, which our Form-Based Code was using the Type 2 process to help developers kind of work... process to help developers kind of work through that. So we've had to remove the Type II process since it's not considered, the planning commission does not have authority to do that. And you may recall, we discussed this with council a while back, and council said, bring it to you as use permits, as opposed to going to the Board of Zone Appeals, it's a special exception. So just reminding you from that earlier briefing. Again, we have the multifamily use permit requirement, that's now been added to the use table within the Form Base Code, that's just carrying on what council had started back in November. We had another issue with accessory structures. The code did not provide for any accessory structures. So for example, if you had a convenience store and it had a canopy, there was no provision to deal with the canopy, so we're putting in some revisions law for accessory structures. We're updating some definitions and working on formatting and editing. I mentioned, you know, the one thing that we were talking about, there's a very odd component of the Form Base Code. Oops, go back here. Yes, we pick tricky with me tonight. Okay, I'll just give up. So we do have a provision in there that deals with architectural standards. We have a series of architectural standards in the zoning code, and it has language in there that's basically states that they only apply where it's visible from the public street space. And that sounds very similar for those people who deal with historic districts, it sounds very similar to the language you see in historic districts. What I don't think people were aware at the time was that term, and the Form Base Code was defined to mean 40 feet. So anything beyond 40 feet didn't have any regulation. So for example, if you had a site that had a sign that was more than 40 feet from the street right of way, there's no regulation for it. So we had a number of those things. We're just taking that provision out. We actually did talk to the developers of the Form Base Code, they said that was really an error to put that in in the first place, and that's proposed to be removed. And that just eliminates what I call a zoning void, areas on a site in which there are no regulations at all. And so we just want to clean that up so that when people come in, it's easy enough for us to advise people what the rules are that they are expected to comply with. So that's pretty much it. We're again trying to clean up some of these issues, trying to incorporate the use permit requirement, eliminate the Type II site plan process, and continue to work to make the Form Base Code as easy to administer and for developers and property owners to use as possible. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about any of the specifics in there for those components.
I was smiling while you were presenting, because last week I was in Richmond, and I ran into a master planner from Arlington, and he was just so pro Form Base Code and talking about all of the different pros and cons of it, and I told him that we had implemented that here and how it's spreading around the country. But we're tweaking is what we're doing to make sure it's applicable to an old historic city like ours.
And in fact, if you looked at the version they use in Arlington, I've gone back and looked, and they typically will tweak their code five to 10 times a year.
Okay.
These things can have, they can have some squirrelings. I'll give you an example of one of ours, just to give you an idea of counties we go to work with. We have an allowance, and our code will allow for drive-throughs, like a restaurant with a drive-through. We have a design requirement that says the building must be on the building line. I'm not sure how that's supposed to work with a drive-through.
Right.
So those are the kind of things, we have to go back and say, this is a tweak.
Right.
You got to be able to incorporate a way to either have the drive-through or don't allow restaurants with drive-through, that type of thing.
And we've got a lot of similarities with Arlington's size and age and-
Exactly. So we try to pay attention to what others are doing and try to learn from what they've, those who've been using it for much longer, learn what they've been doing. That's why we've kind of gone back and looked at some of the tweaks that they've been doing, trying to get in front of it before it becomes, I'll call it a crisis, but we're operating a little bit more reactive instead of being proactive. We're trying to be proactive with that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions or comments, Mr. Ball? All right, ma'am clerk?
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CA 1503, and at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to three minutes to speak on item CA 1503. Members of city council, this public hearing is closed.
Make a prayer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved seven-zero. Item D, CA 1504, citywide, the city is proposing to amend the zoning ordinance to allow food trucks to operate on private property. The amendments will insert a new section 40.1-4.5F8, food trucks on private property into the zoning ordinance, and will amend Table 40.1-4.5A, permitted temporary uses in structures, and sections 40.1-4.5C1, retail sales or display of goods from vehicles, and 40.1-8.3 definitions. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call and I have speakers.
Sir.
Okay, good evening again, Mayor Wright. I'm gonna try this thing one more time, good evening. I'll just mention, this has been something that council, we've been working on for a very long time. This goes back to 2013, when the city council, I believe there was a non-agenda speaker, in fact, who'd raised the issue of food trucks, city council directed staff to take a look at it, and we've been working through that process ever since. We've had a number of times, we've come back before city council and work sessions and talked about things we've learned, things we're proposing. And as you may recall, at the last work session, we were advised to bring a fairly broad food truck program, let city council kind of pick all or none or whatever you would want to do. So we're trying to provide you what we would consider a very robust food truck program, but also one that has been, you know, sort of vetted with the food truck industry, with restaurant owners, for example, downtown, things of that nature. So with that, I'll just make one other comment. We have a number of code issues that are involved in food trucks. As we got into, we recognize that, and for those who are interested in this, our zoning ordinance only goes to the property line. So when we're dealing with private property or city-owned property, things of that nature, we can regulate that through the zoning ordinance. However, when you hit the sidewalk, hit the street, things of that nature, that's in chapter 32 of the city code. So there's a number of issues that have been raised regarding chapter 32 of the city code that will come to you at your next meeting on the 26th, with the idea being your first reading of the zoning changes, and the one reading you're required for the chapter 32 will come together on the 26th, and you'll have your whole food truck program in front of you for final adoption or denial, as the case may be. Again, looking through the different code sections that are impacted by this, zoning ordinance is involved, again, the chapter 32 of the city code is involved. We looked at the health standards in chapter 15.1, we've looked at parks and rec standards in chapter 25, since the city will propose to use food trucks for parks and rec activities or city park properties. So we'll make sure that we didn't have some provision in other parts of the city code in which the food truck program would run afoul of some other code section, try to make sure we've got, you know, those codes all smoothed out across each other. And one other thing we have was included in your packet, there was a proposed manual and operating policy that would be administered by the city manager's office that would be able to be adjusted as needed, and again, the idea being trying to make sure we have quality control over the food truck program. So for tonight, we're really talking about the zoning code piece, and again, the chapter 32 piece will come to you on the 26th. So what we look at here, you know, where can food trucks operate? And so we look at these, non-residential private property, we kind of break up the, what's in the zoning code into two pieces, residential, non-residential. And I use this as an example, if somebody want to put a food truck at a Lowe's or something of that nature, that would be a non-residential operation, that's going to be treated differently than what is suggested in the residential. And the residential districts, after all the research and things we did, what the idea was to propose was to allow people to use a food truck like you'd use for catering. I mentioned this at the last council work session. I will mention that during the planning commission discussion on this item, that was the one area, there seemed to be some concern about allowing too many food truck events at one location. The proposal you have in front of you would be three times a month at one, on one parcel in a residential neighborhood. That is certainly something that is not set in stone, there's no magic to the number. It seemed like a reasonable proposal, but if council's concerned, want to restrict that once a month, once a year, whatever you would like to do, we want to let you know that was the one item at the planning commission meeting in which there was some, I'll say some discomfort with the number of times that was proposed, so just want to make sure you're aware of that. We also, again, look at on city property, that would require approval of the city manager, again, following through with our rest of our policies. And then we'll talk about, you know, in the chapter 32 stuff on city right-of-way outside of downtown and downtown during special events and festivals. And I just want to mention one thing there, again, in the early stages of the food truck program development, you recall, there was a lot of concern or some concern raised by downtown restaurant operators, they weren't necessarily looking or excited about having a food truck parked anywhere close to their bricks-and-mortar store. During the course of the process, ultimately, the food truck operators said, look, we're not looking to be there permanently, what we'd like to be able to do is come down when you're having special events and festivals and operate that time. So what you have before you, what you'll see at your next meeting on chapter 32, will be to allow food trucks only at special events and at festivals. That would all go through, again, through that approval process through the city manager's office, there'd be no fixed locations, so you don't have any map anywhere saying, put one here, put one there, or there's a 500-foot distance separated. Any of those things we'd shown you in the early stages, none of that exists anymore, because there'll be no fixed locations. So again, we go back and go through the code, the city code, we look through our policies, the areas we're taking a look at, we're trying to make sure or incorporate in the food truck program, noise, lighting, trash handling, there are hours of operation, you see that in there, making sure they're serving fresh food, they're not buying prepackaged food somewhere and then reselling it. The aesthetics of the food truck, making sure they go through a permitting process, make sure they get safety clearance, I know Councilman Moody had raised concerns about the safety of trucks, and make sure we've got a safety inspection with the fire department in there for anybody who's carrying propane, and also, of course, making sure they get all their health department permits and any permits required with the commissioner of revenue for business license. So all that's been captured in the overall program. Fairly complicated, I know, there's a lot, a lot in there. Again, it'll all kind of come back together when we get the chapter 32 elements before you on the 26th. What would that be? Glad to answer any questions. Just mention one thing, Brian Swetz is back here, and also, Brian, if you raise your hand back there. Brian is our planner, he's our planning department representative, has been project manager for this, basically since Fred left, and if you have any questions that I don't know the answer to, Brian is our food truck expert at this point, so I'd be glad to bring him up if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ball, and I just want to add that this is a culmination of input from council members, from the public. We've gone out and tried to solicit as much information as we can with the business community and all of those folks, so want to thank you guys for doing that, and Fred conducted somewhat, I thought, some very informative meetings, and it was kicked off because a citizen came up here and mentioned in that. And so we've kind of weighed all of those options, and we're ready to move forward. And again, other cities are doing it, everybody says, because everybody does things, we ought to do it, and we kind of agree with that, but it needs to make a best fit for cities like Portsmouth and with all of those other things under consideration. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. I just want to, first of all, I would like to thank Fred for all the work he did at the beginning of laying the groundwork to get this thing off and running. He was kind of out here, we kind of pulled it in, it kind of, we went through one of those kind of processes. But at the end of the day, I think we do have a program that has a chance, and I think as we described at the planning commission meeting, you need to have successful food truck operators if you're going to have a food truck program. So if you, if you're overly restrictive, and if that's the, if that's the way you start to lean, then you really don't have much way for food truck operators to make money doing it, so they will not come to Portsmouth, and that's the decision you have to weigh before you-
And the other side of that, Al, is we didn't want somebody to drag our trailer up there with half the wheels falling off and saying, he was a food truck vendor. So we, you need to be committed, and this is a business, and it needs some legitimacy.
Right, and that's why I think you see in their annual permitting requirement, we're going through regular review, they're going to get permits on their trucks, so we can tell, they've been through all the processes, there'll be nobody who can come in here. One of the reasons we're doing that, of course, if they violate, for example, the noise ordinance or something like that, it'll be very clear whether or not they've been through the city's permit approval process, and that helps the police identify, you know, somebody who's actually got proper permits, or if we have some jackleg that's coming to town, which we hope will not happen. So hopefully, this will be a good addition to the city, assuming city council approves it at the point. Again, I just want to, one last time note, you're on first reading tonight with the zoning code, chapter 32 comes to you in two weeks, and at that point, you'll have the full program. We'll make another presentation, kind of lay the full breadth of, and particularly, I know there's a lot of concerns about the on-the-street part of it, we'll make sure you get a full presentation at the next meeting.
Okay, very good. We've got several questions here, and we want to start with Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Very comprehensive update, Bob. One question, since some of these trucks will be coming from other cities, meal tax collection, will they be bonded? And if not, what leverage will we have to make sure we're getting paid our food taxes?
I have discussed that question when you raised it previously with the commissioner of revenue, he would treat them basically as like you treat a restaurant, and they would in fact have to post a certain bond that a restaurant posts when they start up. So yes, they'd have to pay, they have to pay their fair share of their taxes, we're trying to make sure that taxes that they should be paying here stay here.
Okay, so that bond will be predicated on potential revenue?
Right.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Dr. Woodaker?
Yes, Mr. Ball, in our previous discussion on this issue, as far as the downtown food trucks, have we determined as far as the limited space and opportunity, how is it going to be determined who gets to locate where under the program?
Right, and that's what I was indicating before, that, you know, as we discussed this the last time, we were looking at adding fixed locations, and so there'll be a question about, was it first come, first served, or what would be the process, a lottery, whatever you, but in this case, we're not going to be doing any fixed locations. So you'll have a number of food trucks that'll be permitted to operate, and we'll have a certain number of locations, and quite frankly, it's going to come down to the food truck operators determining where, you know, that they can operate in a location that's available and actually getting into the location to do that. There won't be any lottery system or anything where the city would control locations, other than to designate street segments, because the city engineer would say it'd be appropriate to park a food truck on.
So will there be a certain number of food trucks that can be in a given area?
Yes, I mean, they're going to be limited by the availability of parking, so that's going to be a self-regulating process. We'd be glad to bring back a map to you to show you kind of the locations we think these things will locate. We have a few restrictions, depending on the time of the, or the nature of that, for example, if there's an event in Nantello's, we've got some restrictions on anybody being down.
Right.
There would be competition with the concessionaires at the Nantello's. And I just want to mention, going back to a question that Mayor Wright had mentioned before about staying away from concessions at athletic events, and all that's built into the policies and the regulations as well, but yes, there's going to be a limited number of locations in which a food truck can operate, because we're going to preserve small-street park.
For those limited areas, then, how is it going to be determined who gets to be in those areas?
Well, at this stage of the game, we haven't set up any type of a determination, we're going to identify the locations that are available, and the food trucks will be able to come in there and park. So if the space is available, they can park there. That's right now the plan. If council would like a more formal-
So permits should be issued by space?
Well, you'll have locations that'll be approved, and they'll vary by event, too, as well. That's one that we're looking at, a lot of city events, they have different locations and different requirements. So we're going to work with the city engineering department, traffic engineering, to make sure we're identifying appropriate places on the streets for the trucks to operate. So we'll be identifying places where it is appropriate, an on-street parking space where it's appropriate, and then it's basically going to be first come, first served, unless the city is running the event, and then the city wants to assign spaces to the different, to the trucks, under our permitting process. But if council would like a more formal, you know, process for that, we can certainly develop one and have a little bit more control if you'd like to be able to do that.
Okay.
We're not assuming we're going to be overwhelmed with food trucks going into this thing, we may be surprised and need to do something more formal at a later date.
Okay, and we want, and I'm glad you brought up that other issue about the sports event. So we've heard our little leaguers loud and clear, we don't want competition, we know most of, you do your fundraising at your concession stands, at the ball fields, and we're cognizant of that, so thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Meeks?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, would they be displaying like a city sticker like we used to get for our cars?
Yes, we're going to have a decal program put in their windshield, it'll be evident to anybody walking by whether or not they are approved by the city to be in a location, again, or if they are somebody who's just shown up and they're taking a space.
And that will have to be displayed at all times while they're working?
Yes, and we'll have an annual permitting process, very similar we do with the sidewalk vendors, we do an annual permit update, so you'll get a permit, be good for one year, it's revocable by the city if you're violating the requirements, if you're, you know, running a poor operation, it's revocable. But it'll be an annual permitting process, and vehicles would have a sticker on it to identify they in fact have been approved as a city food truck operator.
I would make sure they actually have to stick it on the vehicle, so it's not-
Yes, it's going to, it has to be visible, and the point being, so that the police can walk up, well, anybody, but in particular for our concern with enforcement, if there's a noise issue or something like that, trash issue, whatever the case may be, the police can walk up and instantly recognize whether or not the truck's supposed to be there in the city or not.
And each one's going to have its own number, so it won't be, so we could identify if it's an issue?
Yeah, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to take into consideration those things to make them easily identifiable, so if there's going to be a citizen complaint against- to make them easily identifiable, so if there's going to be a citizen complaint, again, or the police department enforcement, they can tell.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Baldwin, and very good question from the council. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Mr. Mark Odoldikutrowski.
Good evening. I stated at the planning commission meeting a number of objections. I hope that all of you on council have reviewed the transcript of that meeting, but I'm not going to assume that you have. For the sake of my fellow citizens who were not there or have not received that documentation, my principal concerns have to do with neighborhood presence of food trucks. Essentially, you are inserting businesses into residential areas, and to me, as a homeowner, one of the great benefits of paying that mortgage and those real estate taxes is the ability to enjoy my property quietly. Food trucks are not noiseless. To power them requires a generator, or requires the running of the motor that powers the vehicle so that there's electricity to do the cooking with. Now, in a residential area, you don't have the same sort of ready enforcement mechanism that you do at a special event, where there are extra police and numerous city officials. So somebody who is having an event, the food truck pulls into the driveway, assuming the driveway is paved, because that's in the regulations as well, if they have a gravel driveway, they're excluded, apparently. Somebody pulls into a driveway with a food truck, sets up, puts up the generator, and from 10:00 in the morning until 9:00 at night, that generator is na, 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 next to other people's homes who are not participating in the event. You have issues in terms of controlling who is there. According to the regulations, just anybody can't walk up, but how would a passing patrol car know who's an invited guest and who's a show-up? I believe that you are creating enforcement issues that this city is ill-prepared to handle, and so I would suggest that you eliminate the provisions for food trucks in neighborhoods, carry on with special events, that is much easier to control. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, thank you. M.J. Mettler?
Good evening.
Good evening.
On May 18th, 2015, the state of Virginia passed a groundbreaking law. This new law allows mobile vendors to sell their wares on state-maintained roads. The state lawmakers and Governor McAuliffe support food trucks. The governor said that he thought food trucks were innovators, and the government shouldn't impede on their success. Food trucks typically provide niche cuisines utilizing local products and provide enrichment to the community and a social atmosphere. They also provide entry-level opportunities, allowing entrepreneurs to test ideas and accumulate the capital needed to climb the economic ladder and reach the next rung, a brick-and-mortar restaurant. In doing so, food trucks create jobs and self-sufficiency on a local level. Street vendors contribute to the city by paying local sales taxes and can make a surprisingly large contribution to the city. Food trucks activate underused spaces to bring new life to economically suffering parts of the community, as well as neighborhood safety by putting eyes on the street. Furthermore, the Fourteenth Amendment protects individual liberty, including economic liberty from government depredations. Mobile vendors have the right to earn a living, free from protectionist and anti-competitive regulations. Making proximity and zoning restrictions between food trucks and restaurants is unconstitutional, and protecting businesses from competition is not legitimate use of government power. The current restrictions are primarily in place to protect existing businesses from increased competition. Competition is the driving force behind economic growth and innovation. Please take all of this into consideration when making your decision. Food trucks will be a modern and unique addition to the city of Portsmouth, and will bring in business from other cities as well as considerable tax revenue. Small businesses are the backbone of America. Why would you hinder a small business from prospering?
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Donna Ord.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Donna Ord, this is my husband, Marty Ord. We own and operate Carnage Asada. We're the number-one food truck in Hampton Roads in eastern Virginia. Our business travels throughout Hampton Roads, and we are licensed in every city, including Portsmouth. We actually started our business in Portsmouth with Sidney Mears, the owner of Stove, and he is our mentor, and he also is our commissary. We want to just tell you that we stored our truck here in Portsmouth, and when we brought it here, people loved it. We stored it, and the first few months, I got calls like crazy. When can you bring your truck to our business? Unfortunately, I had to tell them, "We can't do it," and it was really hard for us, and it was sad. We actually moved the truck to downtown Norfolk, where they embraced us there, and that was really hard for us, because we wanted to do business here in Portsmouth, and that's an opportunity that Portsmouth is missing out on. We've set up in other cities, and occasionally, we visit Portsmouth as a private caterer, and also, we've set up on the border of northern Suffolk to service ODU, Tri-Cities, and we have tremendous, tremendous response to the population in this area. Portsmouth is looking for food trucks, and they want, they want the food trucks. We are annually checked by Portsmouth Health Department, and we communicate regularly with them. Our truck is regularly boarded by various city health departments. We have over eight different business licenses and inspected by eight different fire inspectors. I pay eight different city taxes, as well as state and federal taxes. We also pay vending military facilities to downtown organizations and festivals. Carnage Asada employs six employees, two full-time. Food trucks are necessary. They're necessary in Hampton Roads, and it's time for change. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Very good.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CA 1504. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to three minutes to speak on item CA 1504. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved, 7-0.
Hey, we did something, girl.
Unfinished Business 15-430, rezoning, item A. Ordinance granted the request of Roger Cornet, owner, to rezone a .76-acre parcel currently zoned urban residential high to neighborhood mixed use in order to make the property zoning consistent with other zonings in the vicinity. The property is located at 5,000 Portsmouth Boulevard, Z 1506. First reading vote, 7-0, approved. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 7-0. City Managers Report, 16-09. Adoption of an Ordinance Accepting Funding From the U.S. Department of Agriculture Through the Virginia Department of Social Services in the Amount of $9,030 and Appropriating Said Amount in the FY 2015-16 Social Services Fund for the Purpose of Funding Costs Under the Elevate SNAP Employment and Training Project. Vision Principles, A Robust Economy for Working Men and Women, Quality of Life and Lifelong Learning Community. Electronic Roll Call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 7-0. 16-10. Adoption of an Ordinance to Appropriate $64,953 of funding received from the U.S. Department, excuse me, U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration and the FY 1516 Asset Forfeiture Fund for the Office of Commonwealth Attorney's Case Management Project. Vision Principle, Efficient Response of Government. Electronic Roll Call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 7-0. 16-11. Adoption of an Ordinance to Appropriate $18,403 of asset forfeiture funding received from the Commonwealth of Virginia in the FY 1516 Asset Forfeiture Fund for the Office of the Commonwealth Attorney's Case Management Project. Vision Principle, Efficient Response of Government. Electronic Roll Call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 7-0. New Business 16-12. Courts and Commissions, Councilman Edmonds.
I have nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
16-13. Items submitted by council members.
Yes, let me, first of all, start off talking about community engagement. I think you're all aware of the press conference that we had here a week ago, talking about our new initiative of reducing violence and crime through community engagement. If you are lucky enough to get home tonight in time, you will hear our president at his last State of the Union address, and he will talk about community engagement. He spoke earlier today about it, the Vice President, Valerie Jarrett, all of his folks, because it is so vitally important that we hear from you in the community and make sure that your voices are heard. And along those veins, we've talked to you about several initiatives and things that we want to carry out throughout the community. One of them is our budget process, and it's already online, and it'll be on our television station, that our community budget engagement, we got dates set for Saturday, January the 30th, at Wilson High School, from 9:00 to 11:00. This is for the budget. The manager has to present a budget to the council, then we need to deliberate it and have it ratified probably around mid-May. We want to hear from you, so please go to Wilson on January the 30th, from 9:00 to 11:00, or IC Norcom on February the 4th, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., or at Churchland High School on February the 6th, from 9:00 to 11:00. Again, we want to hear from you. You know, this budget season is probably one of the most contentious seasons or times on this council, and we tend to hear from people whenever there's something that you didn't know about, or you don't like, or you heard last minute. So I'm urging all of you, we have these flyers out, they're all over the internet, they're on Facebook, our marketing director, we covered all bases where folks can see these things. We want to hear from you. Mr. Pace, is there anything I'm missing here on the community engagement for the budget piece? This is for you to submit ideas, suggestions to the manager and her team, so they can process that. You may hear your idea coming before this council. We may shoot it down. We will have a process where you'll be able to come up in a public hearing and say, "That was my idea, and I want to know why you'd shut it down," or why you were in favor of it, but engagement is extremely important, and so we want to hear from all of you, and so this is important. Along those community engagement pieces, we are also in the process of a search for a police chief and a fire chief, and under the community engagement piece, we want to hear from every single one of you, and we have here on Saturday, January the 23rd, community forums will be held for the two top candidates for both positions in city council chambers. The candidates will give a brief 15-minute presentation, and then field questions from the community. Okay? The total time allotted for each candidate will be 45 minutes. Thank you very much. And so, again, that is January the 23rd, Saturday, right here, what time are we doing that? I don't see my time here, but we'll get you that, but we need you here. These candidates need to hear from you, and we want to, again, we talked at the press conference about our initiative with community engagement. Our president last year, on the executive order, initiated a task force and brought together some of the best legal and law enforcement minds throughout this country, and he put together a 21st-century policing task force that comprised of people from all over the country. And there's a report, I encourage all of you to go online and Google and look up 21st-century task force, that the president had, he had Commissioner Chief Ramsey from Philadelphia, who has just retired, and he had a college professor from George Mason, Ms. Laura Robertson, who co-chaired that task force, and they've got six pillars in there that talk about things and initiatives that communities like Portsmouth should be doing or should be going in the direction of doing, and one of the pieces is the community engagement piece. And if you look at those six pillars, pillar one, and I think pillar four, talked about community policing, some of the things that we already do here in Portsmouth, as well as trusts and all of those types of things, so please be engaged with this process. I think I talked at Cavalier Manor and some others last year, when I went to the U.S. Conference of Mayors, this was a item that we all discussed, and I actually sat down with our police chief and talked about some of those things, and how some of the things that they mentioned, we were already doing in here in Portsmouth. And so, again, we need to hear from the community, it's very important that we have this input, and we get into this whole piece of community engagement, because, again, we want to hear from each and every one of you. Madam Manager, did I miss anything?
No, you didn't. Excuse me. No, Mayor, you didn't miss anything, but I would like just to reiterate that the budget community engagement process is both the city municipal government and the school system. Dr. Bracy will be presenting at the community forum. Dr. Patton will be presenting. There will be an engagement by the public where you will have, for better use, a clicker, where the participants will be answering questions and getting all the feedback on the questions, that you will be given an opportunity to engage, what are your views? In some of those settings, there are citizens who decide where the two of us want to work together, like a group, and we'll decide that, we'll have and discuss it, and then come forth with what our decisions are in terms of rating those questions. So this is new, it's going to be very engaging, so you'll be hearing a lot about these dates that are coming up. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and just want to let you know, those clickers work, so please come out and participate. We got that idea from some other municipalities, I think about a year and a half ago, I talked with Williamsburg, who used it, because, again, local governments are very concerned when we have these community meetings, there's always one or two that are staged, one or two that want to dominate the entire meeting, and then some people tend to, if you cast a negative view, they don't want to come up and say something opposing, and so this clicker allows you to speak and respond without anybody knowing who you are, but we want to get a true pulse of the individuals that are there. And we know some people are very good with speaking in public, and don't mind sharing their ideas, and others want to be a part but may not want to be on an imposing view and may not want to publicly do that, so we're trying all angles to be able to get that. And lastly, under the engagement piece, don't forget, we have our next community meeting is on January the 19th, which is next week. is on January the 19th, which is next week, at the Churchillan Library, and that's going to be at 7:00. These community meetings, we have twice a year now, Madam Clerk, and they're very important, and we want to hear from you. I think the last time that we had it at IC Norcom, we had a very good turnout. We could care less about the subject, whether you like us or don't like us, we want you to be civil, we want you to be able to have the input. And I never shared this, but since I've been mayor, that meeting has been on the same night that I'm scheduled to be in Washington, D.C. at the White House. And I stay for that meeting, and I leave that meeting at night and drive to D.C., so I'm there in the morning with the other mayors. I don't say that for sympathy, I say that because I think it's vitally important. I've had several council members probably say, you know, you should go ahead and we can do it without you. But I don't want you to think that the mayor is not interested in hearing your ideas and your input. So please, come out on January the 19th at 7:00 at the Churchillan Library and let us hear from you. Community engagement, you're going to hear that a lot, not only here, you're going to hear it throughout this country. We have to get involved and stop letting the one percenters of the people that always want to oppose things have their view, and we tend to cast that out either through media outlets or whatever as that's the view or the sense of the majority, and we all know that's not true. Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I always talk about things coming up, and this, we're kind of in the winter doldrums now, but we have some pretty neat things coming up, beginning next weekend through the month of February. We have programs on Black History called Black History 2016 Now, celebrating today's changemakers, and this is a collaborative effort between our museums and our library system. So there will be interactive activities for children, for adults, for seniors at the Children's Museum, at the Courthouse Gallery, at the Portsmouth Community Colored Library Museum, at the Craddock Branch Library, at the Churchillan Branch Library. There's a whole series of activities from historical narratives to things that children can do that are interactive. So I would encourage you, these little brochures are up here to grab when you leave. You can look online at portsvaevents.com or call 393-8983 and get all the details and the schedule, because there's a whole lot in here, and it should be fun.
Very good. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got three things. The first one, you mentioned the White House and President Obama. Actually, we have a 1999 graduate of IC Norcom, Kelly Adesina, whose mother, Patricia Adjerton, was a former civic league president of Hunter's Point Civic League. She's spoken before this body many times, but her daughter recently received a presidential appointment, which is a big deal. She was appointed as a special prosecutor or special counsel for the USDA, United States Department of Agriculture. That's quite an honor.
Good deal, absolutely, yes.
Also, Westmoreland Children Youth Association, thanks for the effort of Tyrone Hines and some contributors. He's going to be taking a group of children up to the General Assembly this month, I believe perhaps January the 18th, and they're going to view our government at work in Richmond. I understand one of our delegates is going to spring for lunch for the children, and so that sounds like really a good event. The other item is not so good. Tonight, I was informed that council is taking punitive action against me in the form of In my view, this is further evidence that this council is tightening the veil of secrecy that's been lowered over this municipal government. In addition, this government's been defined by no comment, no return phone calls, and pretty much a media blackout. We now have a government that's attacking the very principles of freedom of speech, and freedom of speech does apply to elected officials as well. Freedom of speech is the right to communicate one's opinions and ideas without fear of government retaliation or censorship. I feel tonight's actions, while aimed at me, also represent a direct threat to anyone who believes transparency is an essential element of a free society. Martin Luther King said, "There comes a time when silence is betrayal." Be assured that tonight's action will not cause me to betray my belief that transparency in Portsmouth's government is worth fighting for. What I was charged with was posting something on Facebook prior to a closed session, just giving people a heads-up that an issue that's been in the news was going to be discussed. The $1,500 fine, I'm told in a letter that I can appeal it, but I have to appeal it to the very same people who've imposed it. I don't think my odds are too good for that appeal. So tonight, I've got $1,500.
Hold on to it.
I'm not going to hold on to it, I'm going to pay it. I believe in paying your bills, but rest assured, I'm not going to appeal it to this council. I'm going to appeal it to a higher authority. I also brought another $1,500, Mayor, for future, I guess, violations of transparency. So be assured, and I want to look at you when I say it, I want to look at all of you when I say it, you're not going to muzzle me. I was elected by the people, and I'm going to keep the people informed.
Amen.
All right, Dr. Edmonds.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say that the Wildra Wilson High School and their marked band director, John Jenkins, were at the Gator Bowl, and they were so good that they've been invited back to come again.
That's very good.
And the band director, Mr. Jenkins, would like to come and share with council during our next meeting some of the things that happened and rewards that they had received. And I told him I'd let that air and see if we would be able to accomplish that. Secondly, we had a great meeting when we talked, had the press conference with the mayor, you leading it off, and then the chief of police, sharing some wonderful ideas and thoughts. I think we had a good talk in sharing it, and now I think we need to come together to do some brainstorming and have some groups, small groups, and post some things that we, the citizens, as well as civic leagues and people that live in their neighborhoods who see things happening, where we can start coming together and eradicate some of the crime that we see will be happening. And I think when we have our meeting at the library-
Yes, sir.
-that would be a good venue to start, if someone would come, not saying what's going wrong, but bring some ideas that we as citizens of Portsmouth can all, because the crime affects all of us and all of our neighborhoods. And even if it didn't, because it's in another neighborhood, we all should be concerned. I think every 7-11 that we have has been robbed by people toting guns. It's almost like you're in Wild, Wild West again. But if there's going to be some change, it's going to take all of us and look beyond our faults and differences and indifference and come together as a city to make sure that we can be involved in eradicating this. And I like the ideas that Chief Mook brought forth, and I think we can build upon those ideas and make a difference.
Sure.
So I hope that the citizens who are here and those that are viewing this will look past other things that are not really serious, but look at the things that is causing a lot of havoc in our city, and that's shootings, people carrying guns, and people killing and people dying as a result of it. So I hope that we would have a great success when we get together at the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop Edmonds. I actually was speaking this weekend with Congressman Bobby Scott. As you all know, he met last week on Monday and Tuesday with the president on this whole issue of gun violence and throughout this country, and you know by executive order what the president did. And again, it is about all of us coming together, and it's all about stakeholders. And if you listen in that press conference and what we're talking through this community engagement, it's about all of the stakeholders in our community, and it is not about pointing fingers, and it is not about politics, it's about our community, and it's throughout this country. It's throughout this country, and there isn't a day you can turn on the television or on the radio and hear some city within Hampton Roads or within the Commonwealth that are dealing with these issues. And so we want to communicate and work together, and I did not want to share it because I had shared it with the mayor of Hampton and Newport News, who we have been talking now for about a year and putting on a forum, and it should be announced in about another three weeks of the date and time and all of the stakeholders that we're trying to bring together here in Hampton Roads, and we're looking at having it over at the Hampton Convention Center, and we're looking at bringing in some outside folks. But again, that's the discussion piece. The action piece, which is what Bishop Edmonds just spoke on, us as leaders and stakeholders in our community, churches, civic leagues, elected officials, down the line, block captains, we have to come together, and we have to communicate and work with each other. And so, Dr. Edmonds, thank you for that. And Ms. Simmons, did you have another comment?
Yes, sir, I do. Just a point of clarification, a bit ago, Mr. Moody talked about action by this council, and just as a point of clarification, the action by this council was by a supermajority of council, which means five out of seven. That does not include me.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, just to be-
Your microphone.
-on, since our press conference that we had, we, being municipal government, city staff, we're working, hearing all of your concerns of how you would like to see the engagement go forward. As you're aware, we're going to be participating in a forum with Hampton coming up February 11th. Mary Button, the city manager of Portsmouth, city manager of Hampton, reached out to me today because the city managers and county administrators at our last meeting in Smithville last week, we are all talking about violence and crime, so we will be coming back and have some semblance of engagement. We've also reached out to criminologists, sociologists, talked with others who Dr. Whitaker had advised for us to have the data, statistics, and things, we need to know exactly what our issues are, and there are experts in the area that we are reaching out to. So we are following in that path to make sure we are totally engaged. But on another note, it's not often that you get a text, and on yesterday, I got a text, and the text read, "Good afternoon, Dr. Patton. I want to ask if I would be able to come to your office tomorrow," which is today, "after I'm released from school, if possible, and stay until the city council meeting tomorrow evening. I also want, I don't want to disturb the workplace or you. So if not, I totally understand." It just, it just, and I want to stress this, it just never hurts to ask. And I'm going to ask Maurice Hunt to stand, because this young man, who is a senior at Churchillan High School, at every realm of opportunity that he can take to engage himself, to position himself, that he can listen and learn, and so today, from the time Maurice got out of school until tonight, right now, he has been working with us over in the city manager's office, and I said to him, "We're going to find some way for you to continue that engagement." When you have some young man who's hungry and anxious and want to do good and go off to college and come back and serve his city-
Amen.
-I say, "We give him a chance."
Absolutely.
So I am so proud of Maurice Hunt. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And before I wrap up, let me just also, I want to thank, since the press conference and since the announcement, I've got quite a few requests from local radio stations and folks that wanted me to come on and speak on this issue and speak candidly. And I've so far been on about three different radio stations. I think the first one was last Sunday, Joy 1270 with the elder Carlos Howard, and then WPCE on Monday morning at 6:00, and they had a host, which is Mr. James Overton. I don't know if Slim's here tonight, but he's hosting that community forum on WPCE, and I was his first guest, and we talked about that. And in greater length, I was a guest on Hot 91, which is Norfolk State University's radio station, from 8:00 in the morning until 10:00, and we got into great detail about all of the gamuts of these types of concerns in our community, community engagement, parenting, policing, retraining, disparities, and all of those types of things. And I want to thank all of those folks that listened, all of the people that called into the radio station. We have more of those. I think I've got one scheduled for Sunday at 2:00, and I think we're working to confirm with Maurice Ward for his radio station. And I believe tomorrow at 1:00, I am being interviewed by the New Journal and Guide and talking in great depth about these issues. And so, again, I want to appreciate all of the community feedback and the people that are interested in hearing where we go from here and how we come together. And it is our plan to make sure that if there's someone that wants to get involved, just like Dr. Patton just mentioned about this young man at Churchillan, we're going to engage you. We're all stakeholders here. So thank you with that. Mr. Moody, you want another comment?
Yes, just wanted to remind you that I've given the $1,500 to the Sarge of the Arms, and I would like a receipt.
Absolutely.
Not that I don't trust you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
Sixteen dash fourteen, report on pending items, and we have none this evening.
Yes. Okay, Dr. Whitaker, I'm sorry, I did overlook you. Yes, sir.
Right, this is pertaining to pending items, just some updates that I would like to get from the city manager. Before I say that, though, in the comments about crime, I think that the fact that we're about to enter in the budget season, if we're going to be serious about attacking crime at the front end, it'll be interesting to see how positive our citizens are about funding education, because we do know statistically that the number of prison sales is based on reading scores. Also, when we talk about living wages, we'll see how enthusiastic we are about talking about living wages and crime. And so we can't just keep talking about the-
The back end.
-the back end of it, the symptoms, we have to address the problem. And some of those are socioeconomic as well as personal responsibility. The updates I would like from our city manager, as council knows, we have been given some information, we're talking about transparency. We've been given some information involving an investigation by the Virginia Retirement System pertaining to retirement payments that were made to our former city manager, Mr. Rowe, and would like to get an update of where we are in regards to the city's liability, possible liability, and where we are with the Virginia Retirement Systems investigation.
Okay.
No.
No, I'm asking for an update at this point.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, ma'am.
Okay. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, in early September, the information that was requested regarding former city manager were provided to the Virginia Retirement Board. At this time, they have not gotten back with us. I have inquired through our new human resource management director to re- I have inquired through our new human resource management director to reach out to them because in that initial response to their request, they indicated that they would get back with us if there was any liability issues that pertain to the city of Portsmouth. So at this time, as of January the 12th, they have not gotten back with us. But I will have Mrs. Gooden on tomorrow to reach out to them.
Okay, so there could potentially be some payment the city would have to make back to the Virginia Retirement System.
Yes, they indicated that they would have to do the investigation and then determine whether or not the city was liable for any point in regard to both receiving a city check and receiving a full retirement check.
So if you were fully, if you were part of the retirement system, you could not be full-time employed and receive a retirement check?
That is correct.
Okay.
If you are retired from the state of Virginia, Virginia Retirement System, and you have a full-time job in an entity that pays or you are part of the Virginia Retirement System, then you cannot get two checks.
Okay. And so we will know from this whether the city has to pay into the retirement system?
They will advise us, but I will have Mrs. Gooden to follow up tomorrow to see if they have identified any liability that needs to be called to our attention.
Would that have to be a part of the upcoming budget, or would that come out of this fiscal year?
I don't know, but I will find that out, Dr. Whitaker.
Okay.
And we'll get back with you all.
Okay. And also, can you update us on the previous administration's practice of paying the insurance premiums for former employees, some who separated from the city and some who are deceased?
Yes, sir, I will have that report for you.
Do we know where we stand at this point financially, as far as how much has been paid out that should not have been paid out?
I cannot quote that for you exactly, so I would ask you to let me get the report to you, and I will have to the dime how much.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
And we know for sure that these were employees that no longer worked for the city?
Yes, we have validated that, sir.
Okay, all right. And then the last issue, it was mentioned about the police and fire chief search and the community involvement. And I'm just curious, in this process, the fire unions, have the fire unions been involved and the police unions been involved in any type of input as to who this, the next chief will be?
Let me get from the mayor my sheet.
Me too.
All right, thank you. We are just beginning the assessment piece, which will start on Thursday, January the 14th. And that assessment center will be a full day of the five finalists in both fire and police. On Monday, January the 25th, the Police Department Forum will be held, where the top two candidates for both positions will be in city council chambers of City Hall. The candidates will be given a brief 15-minute presentation, and then they will have a total of 45 minutes with police.
No, what I was asking about was at the front end. So have the fire unions had any involvement?
No, I have not, I have not met with any unions at all.
Okay.
But there are, there are engagement forums for both fire and police.
Well, just speaking personally, I would think that considering the culture of both the local and national fire and police departments that we hear all throughout the news media, that the process would have included before the finalist stage, some input from the fire unions. Particularly, we have black fire unions that have made some significant complaints about the culture of our fire department and police department. And my concern is that although we cannot be involved in personnel decisions, we can include people in the process to help enlighten us so that we don't continue to perpetuate a culture that is not conducive to what we would like to see here and inclusive here in the city of Portsmouth. So I would hope somewhere in there that you would allow for some input from the unions so that we can address some of the cultural issues.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Mr. Meeks?
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Patton, can we also get an update of the previous practice that the employees were getting loans from the city? And tell me where in the charter that allows it, or state or federal government?
I can get that information for you.
Can we get a list of the people that the city has loaned money to?
Just for clarity, could you define what loans are and for the public?
Well, I'll let Dr. Patton lead us on that.
Would you like to define whatever Mr. Meeks is asking?
I think that Mr. Meeks is speaking of advanced sick leave.
Oh, okay.
I would think that he's, he's speaking of a process that was in place previous to my coming onboard, which was entitled advanced sick leave. And in that finding, I have had human resource working. And at the last stage that we are, Mrs. Gooden is getting with our city attorney to kind of, to determine how can we go forward, or what is the proper to go forward when it deals with health and leave for health-related issues.
Okay. And so when we say advanced sick leave, can we define what that is? So we're-
Well, according to what my understanding is, is that employees could come to HR and request time in advance to cover sick leave that they were going to take.
And be paid, correct?
And be paid, yes. So I will get that full report that I have.
Very good. Good question, Mr. Meeks.
And we determine how much.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Moody?
Well, while we got to-do lists, I'd like an update on the demolition of Bonneville that the city paid to have that facility demoed. I'd like to know, Dr. Patton, if that bill has been reimbursed either through the owner or through the owner's bank that went into receivership. And also, I'm hearing from people close to the police department that we had changed their holiday leave, where they have to take it within 30 days of a holiday. In other words, if they had to work on Christmas Day, they would get that day. But now that they had, they get it, previously they could carry it over, but now they have to take it within 30 days. I guess my question is, given the deployment issues and the thinness of our police force right now, I don't see where that's necessarily saving money. And if we could go back to the previous policy, it might allow more police officers on the street at any given time.
All right, Mr. Moody, I would have to look into what you are asking. I'm not aware of police and the matter of which you're saying they have to take time. Early on, this is, which has always been in place previous to me being here and coming back, we have an APD, and I think it's APD number nine, which says that city employees cannot carry over more than 352 annual leave hours. That's the, that's the policy that has always been in place.
This is holiday, specifically holiday.
Yeah, I will have to look in that and get with interim chief to see what is it that you're talking about that some have called to your attention, okay?
Okay.
I'll get back with you on it.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Meeks, you got one other thing?
Yes, one other thing. I was talking to Dr. Patton on last Friday, I think. And we had a good conversation about how many police officers we have. We have two-
I have that information, I have-
Is your mic on?
I'm sorry.
I have current information.
Yeah.
Okay.
But will you tell the public we have more police employed today than we have for the last three years?
Yes. Would you like, now, Mayor, I can do two things.
Yes, please.
I can give you this information and also the process for hiring of police officers.
Okay.
Okay? Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, to date, there are three, there are 237 deplorable police officers on the streets of the city of Portsmouth tonight. We have, if something happened and we had to get all our police officers, we have 237. This number of police officers that are deplorable today is higher than the number of officers from 2012 through 2014, when the number was 224. The police department has a total complement of 253 officers. To date, there are eight vacant police positions. This is all validated to date by both our HR director and working with our chief. Currently, we have two recruits that will be hired on January the 19th, reducing our vacancies to six. We currently have eight recruits in the academy at various stages of training. They will complete their training sometimes around June or July. Let me just share briefly the process of hiring a police officer in the city of Portsmouth. The process of hiring a police officer consists of, first, having to pass an entry level test. Second, the candidate has to pass a physical agility test. Third, the candidate has to go through a comprehensive background check. Fourth, the candidate has to go through oral boards, which is an interview process. After completing all of the above, the candidate has to be approved by a majority of the Civil Service Commission. This commission will then submit the qualified candidates to Human Resources Management. Then, an eligibility list is compiled of the eligibility, the eligible candidates. Once the eligibility list is presented, then at this point in time, the police chief interviews each candidate and then determines whether or not a conditional job offer is made. The position is offered on the condition that the candidate satisfactorily passes a physical examination, psychological tests, and has a negative drug test. Then, the candidate begins employment with the city of Portsmouth, and soon thereafter, the candidate enters the police academy and training period. That can equate to eight months. So let me summarize. Civil service advertisement, examination, application, test given, hiring, academy and training. This can take up to 15 to 18 months, based on how the candidate progresses.
And the cost to the city is?
Um, for which, I can't answer that right now, mister. But this is the process, and I'll make that available to anyone who would like a copy.
Okay. I'll compliment right now, we have how many on the-
237.
237.
That's right.
And our average over the last three years have been?
224.
224. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Patton. I just want to add on to that. So I know some people are probably still trying to figure out, might be confused, they said, because you hear a lot of talk about we cut positions, which we didn't, we cut the police budget, which we didn't. What we did was, as you just heard what she said, we knew, those of us who are up here who do numbers, that there was no way we were going to fill all those positions in the next 12 months. So, but they were all funded. So rather than have all that money go to the personnel fund that we weren't going to use, and we had other dire needs, those positions we froze, which we knew we could never fill, allowed us to use that money to close other holes in the budget and not have to raise taxes any further. We did not cut any police positions. As she just said, there are more people on the street right now than there were when I came here five years ago, more police officers. So thank you, Dr. Patton, for the explanation, and I hope that clears up the process about freezing the positions. It's simply a budget, a budget drill to not have money sitting around in a pot that you can't use when you have places you can use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, I think it's a shame that we play on the fears of people. What those numbers also show is what the research has consistently showed, shown that there is no correlation between the number of police and crime. And for people to keep playing on that, they're playing on the fears of the people, and they're playing on their intelligence, and they need to wake up and see that.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, and thank you all very much.
16-15, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Betty Ashberry.
Betty Ashberry, Churchland section of Portsmouth. The report I just heard from Dr. Patton about our police department doesn't go along with what I have been hearing for a long while. You know, I keep thinking about when the terrorists walked into that office in San Bernardino, California, they didn't look around to see who was black or who was white, they just started killing. And they executed 14 innocent people. Now, if that happened here in Portsmouth, would we have enough personnel to cover a situation like happened in San Bernardino? Or would we have enough personnel to cover a high-rise fire like they had in Dubai? Or, and then provide safety for the rest of the city? You know, if I remember correctly, you all did put a hiring freeze on the police and fire department. And as far as having to make the public afraid of what was going on in the city, I don't think anybody, if they've looked around us, it's what's been happening and going on in this city for the last six months, has got to be threatened with fear of what's happening, what's going on in our city. I think it faces us every day. We are confronted with a plague right now in the city of Portsmouth that's in the form of killings and robberies. You know, when we don't have enough police and firefighters on the streets in our city, that not only endangers them, but it endangers the citizens. Also, you all gave raises to the majority of the city employees, which you did not include the fire and police department. Quite frankly, I think that was kind of slap in their face, because we should be watching the backs of the people that protect us and put their lives on the line for us each and every day, not stabbing them in the back. In the press conference, Mayor, the so-called press conference, you told us that we should come together as a city, black, white, young, old, et cetera, and work together to try to rid the city of the crime that's going on. And you know what? I don't see us coming together as a city, as Mayor Hollywood would have called us, the Portsmouth family, as long as we see a council that just made actions like they did tonight, which to me was certainly, certainly upsetting to the citizens, most of us that are sitting here in this auditorium. And also, as long as we have a councilman who is consistently trying to divide this council by things that he's saying and calling people stupid and ignorant, and once again causing a division-
Thank you, Ms. Ashberry.
-of our piece of granite.
Ms. Shirley Pettiford Cherry?
Good evening, Councilwoman and Mayor. My name is Shirley Pettiford Cherry. I am a retired teacher from Portsmouth Public Schools, a reading specialist, as well as a classroom teacher. And I, I'm here to talk about the violence in the city. When we had talked, we, I went to a forum that we had to stop the violence at Norcom, and we talked about that we need people to come together and start talking more about who- who's doing the crime. But my thing, when I did go to the, came to the press conference, Councilman Edmonds mentioned a citizen group, a task force, where we need to have a group of people. But the people that we need are citizens, I mean, people that we can't get to. We need to be talking to people in the neighborhoods, people that are doing these crimes, to be able to find out how we could help them. Education, when we have miseducation and the people are not educated in the city, it brings about poverty. And poverty brings about drugs, and drugs bring about crime. We need to look and really get down and try to find the root of the problem. It's not, you know, pointing fingers. There's not enough policemen on duty. That's not the problem. The problem is that we are, education, we must educate these people. They are put in jail. Eighty-five percent of the people in jail are from Portsmouth and Norfolk. And that's a lot. And when we are talking about in two, in 20, in 2009, we had 49 percent of high school dropouts. We had the highest in the state. Now, we're looking at the fact now that we have the highest number incarcerated. So, we need to go back and look at the problem that we are working with and stop fighting among ourselves. These people, the victims, people that are dying, and our young people, we need to really try to look at, how can we help you? Tell me, how can we help you? We need to get our education, training. We need to bring our city back together by working with a group of people. We need to get a small group together, call a task force, a citizen task force. Get these people that have, uh, records and, you know, been in jail and, people, how can we help you? That's what we need to do. So, I would like to ask someone to get back with me, and I was talking to you, Councilman Edmonds, and this is, you know, what you were talking about at this press conference. And you did say, "We need a small," I mean, we have civic leagues, but we got to try something different. And I just want to work with that.
Thank you, ma'am. Just to let you know, uh, we are looking at conducting a leadership forum, and we're, when we say leadership, we're talking about leadership in our civic leagues, in our schools, our elected officials, our pastors. This clearly has to be all hands on deck, because you're right. It, it does involve early education, funding, and all of those things that you mentioned, Dr. Witter could mention. We got to understand that, and we got to make sure that we're not distorting the message and making people think that either you do this or you don't do that. It's a balance of all of those things, and it's going to involve all of those stakeholders. Thank you very much for your comments, ma'am, and thank you for teaching.
Mr. Steve Carroll?
A few facts. Our homicide rate, November of 2015 versus 2014, up over 200 percent. Our robbery rate, up over 30 percent. And most of those robberies were armed robberies. It's by the grace of God, Mayor, that our homicide rate has not just doubled, it's quad, it could have quadrupled. A little reminiscing. My rec center was about a square mile of empty field in Belvidere in 1964. I played army in the swamp behind Churston Elementary. My gun was a stick that I broke off of a tree. My telephone wasn't a $500 iPad. It was two rusty cans tied together with a piece of wire. I wore $3 Converse's, not $120 Air Jordans. I didn't have a YMCA membership. My kids played in the big water puddle at the front of my driveway when it rained, and I would tie a piece of string to an old fishing rod and give it to them with a piece of old worm, a plastic worm, and they had a ball. I tied trash, uh, plastic trash bags to strings and let them run in the, in the wind, and they thought they were flying a kite when they were three and four years old. It's called parental involvement. It's called imagination. It's called parental responsibility, not social responsibility. In my day, we didn't need resource officers. The hoodlums were in jail, not in the classroom. There have been numerous times when our police and sheriff personnel responded to mass school fights and been subjected to mockery and vulgar insults. Where was this learned from? When Mr. Wright, Mr. Toller, and Ms. Ashbury stood at this podium pleading for support for our public safety departments, they were met with nothing but condescension from some members of council. You sat silently, Mayor, and several other members of council, while our police were vilified as criminals. In a 1229 pilot article, Chief Mook was asked to give a response, and he was denied the right to speak. That sounds like transparency, doesn't it? Oh, it's going on in other cities, is it? Let's see, uh, our homicide rate is twice out of Norfolk, six times out of Virginia Beach, 10 times out of Suffolk. You know what? Councilman Moody, my hat is off to you, because you've got more guts than I've got, pal.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Randy Bailey?
Tough act to follow. I missed your press conference. I missed the rally tonight. Before, I was at a naval hospital. I got pneumonia. I'm not over it yet, but I'm trying. After your press conference, social media lit up with about 40,000 responses of how a public official could get in front of a camera and not say anything. It was amazing, because the responses spread from New York City all the way to Los Angeles, California. Now, tonight, you've made some comments that I give you credit for, and I would like to say that some people are mentioning education and a few other things. Those aren't the root of the problem here. The root of the problem here is you're building shopping centers in Wendy's and McDonald's and 7-Elevens, and you're buying a rec center that's not doing anything. You're spending money in all the wrong places. Why don't you spend some money on some industrial type of whatever, and you put these people to work? You give them some hope. You give them some self-esteem. You give them something to put in their pocket. Because if they have hope and self-esteem and something in their pocket, and they can feed their family and take care of their kids, they're not out in the street shooting and robbing and killing people. Doesn't that make sense? People don't have to be gangsters if they're able to take care of themselves. They don't have to go to the dope dealer or the ABC liquor store to get consolants, because they feel so bad about themselves. They don't have to be educated. Most people have pretty good common sense. I meet a lot of people in this city. They're poor. They're dirt poor. They get by. They'd like to do better than get by. But what they get by with, you people take it in taxes and fees and fines, and you raise them every year. You push them into the corner. When they get in the corner, what are they going to do? They look at the guy across the street with his lights on. "Oh, hell, I'm going over there and get me something." More shooting and killing and robbing. What you people need to do is sit down and put your heads together, and you need to bring some business into this city. You've got enough empty space, that's for sure. You need to put together a plan and bring something into this city that's going to employ people. Not a McDonald's or a Wendy's that employs two or three people.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Tanya Street?
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you doing?
Fine.
All right. Well, thank you for this moment, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. So, my name is Tanya Street, and I live in Portsmouth, in the Kretik area, and I love my city. But today, I'm here to talk to you about human trafficking. January is Human Trafficking Month. Yesterday was actually Human Trafficking Day. Um, I have an organizational, organization called Identifiable Me, and Identifiable Me just exists really just to empower women who have been violated, you know, with different types of violences. And so, one is human trafficking. I myself am a survivor of human trafficking, and so that, which makes me an expert on the subject matter. And so, I do awareness presentations and I also do training. I work with law enforcement, social service providers, and medical staff on how to just identify, how to rescue, how to restore, and just how to go about dealing with victims of human trafficking. Tonight, I really thought it was important that everyone understands the definition of human trafficking, because a lot of, we hear about human trafficking, but we don't really know what it is. We think we see it, and we really don't know what to do about it. And so, what I want to do tonight is just to give you information, educate you, and equip you. So, at the end of my presentation, I will, you probably should have a pen and paper ready, because I'm going to give you some numbers that you can write down, okay? So, just listen as I read you the definition of human trafficking. So, human trafficking, and this is as defined by our United Nations, drugs and crime, human trafficking in persons is the recruitment, transportation, transfer, harboring, or receipt of persons by means of threat, or use of force, or other forms of coercion, of abduction, of fraud, of deception, of the abuse of power, or of a position of vulnerability, or of the giving or receiving of payments or benefits to achieve the consent of a per, of a person having control over another person for the purpose of exploitation. Exploitation shall include, at a minimum, the exploitation of others in forms of, I'm sorry, the exploitation of others. I'm sorry, my volume is up. Okay. Exploitation shall include, at a minimum, the exploitation of prostitution of others, or other forms of sexual exploitation, forced labor or services, slavery or practices similar to slavery, servitude, or the removal of organs. Okay. Do you think that you see any of this happening? Do you mind if I just give the number?
Thank you. Uh, no, ma'am, if you could submit that for us in writing to the record, if you're for the purpose of educating us. But I do have a question for you, because on one of the radio stations, I believe Hot 91, a caller called in and asked me about that question as it relates to Portsmouth and Hampton Roads. Would you that caller?
No, I wouldn't.
Okay.
No, but I have a work with this city.
I didn't have the answer, and I tried to answer most of those questions as honestly as I could, and they wanted to know if that was a huge problem. So, is it a huge problem in Hampton Roads? Do you have that answer?
It is a problem in Hampton Roads.
Okay.
It is.
Okay. All right. Thank you. If you would supply that to us in writing, we'd be more than happy.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
And thank you. Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Mr. Dwayne Wilson?
Okay. It looks like what I have is anticlimactic to everything else that's been said. I'm concerned about the monument on High Street that I read in the paper, maybe we're going to spend $100,000 to move to another place. All I have to say is, why don't we improve it rather than move it? Why don't we tell the story of Americans, of the American beginning, in a truthful manner, and leave the monument where it is? Explain exactly how people felt then and how they feel now, or how they want to feel now. Improve this. In the beginning, as I recall, the southern states got special dispensation for representation because of the black population, the slavery population. You counted three out of every five people, and then, they didn't get the vote. But the southern states got to get more representation because of that. There's small things like that that I think that maybe everybody can come together over and go, "Wait a minute. This is wrong. We know it's wrong." And that's who we were. That's not who we want to be. And along with the monument, this is just an idea I had, but who can you call to talk to about it? How can you find out what's going on? I hear that, you know, this might have happened. That's what I hear in the paper. Is there somebody here that's talking about this? How can we get good information? That's it. You can have the rest of my time.
Thank you. You said, "Very good question." Um, Mr. Moody, do you have a question or comment for the speaker?
Yes. Thank you for being here, Mr. Wilson. You, what you say has a lot of truth in it, that monument is to honor those who died, not a way of life, and particularly those who, who died for that cause from Portsmouth. But we also have a colored library that's a reminder of a time that we don't want to go back to. And I think that's what history's all about. You know, if you aren't reminded of history, it can certainly repeat itself. So, people need to be reminded of eras that weren't pleasant, eras that we wouldn't agree with today. And on both of those counts, we, we wouldn't want to go back to the time of the Civil War, and we wouldn't go back to the Jim Crow era, certainly where people were separated, not only had to go to a different library, different restrooms. I was a very young kid, don't remember that, but I know about it because of museums, because of history books, that I have knowledge of it. And that knowledge tells me that that wasn't good, wasn't a good way to treat people. But thank you for bringing that to us. Perhaps telling the story and how we've evolved would be something that could be erected there on some type of appropriate sign. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir. Good night.
Our final speakers, Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Tonight, I will review the qualities that we need from our elected leaders. Good decision-making reflects a leader's sense of right and wrong. Doing the right thing influences attitudes and behaviors. Principles of Liberty Number Three states that the most promising method of securing a virtuous and morally stable people is to elect virtuous leaders. We, the people, need to have a sense of right and wrong ourselves, so we can elect virtuous and morally stable leaders. The reason our city is in crisis is because we lack social skills, and our leaders lack them as well. We witness this by the way Portsmouth is governed by cliques. These cliques are political extremists who want to pull the people away from the balance center of self-government to a centralized government of four. To keep our self-government in the balance center, a two-party political system was created. One political party has moral leaders referred to as the problem-solving group, and these leaders are sensitive to the unfulfilled needs of the people. The other political party has moral leaders with the responsibility of conserving the people's resources and individual liberty. Those leaders are able to analyze the programs for the unfulfilled needs of the people with two questions. Can we afford it, and what will it do to the rights and individual liberty of the people? Did the Portsmouth voters elect any leaders to our city council who could do that? I don't think so. We, the people, are no longer represented. This became apparent when a rally and a news conference went viral. When that happened, our city's government lost its credibility, and the people decided to take matters into their own hands. to take matters into their own hands. The appropriate course of action for our leaders to take now is to return the power to the people, which will enhance our dignity, empower us, and enable us to fulfill our potential when you listen to us. We can prevent conflict from happening in the future by implementing the whole school change program in our public school division. Students will learn how to resolve conflict early in life, so when they are elected to public office, they won't be combative when somebody asks questions, they will answer them civilly. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. There being no other business, we will stand adjourned, and again, don't forget the community meeting next week.